Good evening, everyone. And I would like to call our city council meeting for Wednesday, August 28th, 2019, to order. At this time, for a moment of silence, you know, I had an opportunity today to be at the Rails to Trails recognition and celebration today down on the riverfront. And it basically is charting a collaborative course between Washington State and Washington, DC, that you can ride your bike, or your, or walk, or hike, or whatever. And it's off the road. This is not a paved roads. These are abandoned rail, uh, railway lines and whatever. Uh, also, as I was there, barges are going by, and as many of you may know, seventy percent of all our coins, corn, soybeans, and wheat travel on the Mississippi. Literally, as we were just finishing up, the Canadian Pacific Railroad came through. And next week, I'm gonna be meeting the group from the traveled Route 66 from the one coast to the other in vintage cars. And what brought to my mind is how integral our city is. We are literally the passageway from one coast to the other. And we're so blessed with this beautiful city and the wonderful opportunities that we have. But it really comes down to, as we strive to do, is bringing everybody together and finding ways that we can work solidly together. So with that, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please, for your acts of standing?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Uh, Brian, would you please call the roll and welcome back? We're glad you're feeling well.
Thank you. Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Digman?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Luhl?
Present.
Mattson?
Here.
And Dunn?
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I want to welcome all of you, and those in attendance, and also those reviewing the meeting on your computer or vocal device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as our city council meetings are recorded and available on the City of Davenport website for viewing. We are happy you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families here in our community, and those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you address, if you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. And when addressing the city council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, we're delighted to have you here this evening, and we want to move on with our agenda. And first of all, will an alderman move approval of the city council meeting minutes for August 14? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Those minutes have been approved. Uh, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a reminder that many city facilities will be closed Monday in observation for the evening.
Thank you. We'll be closed for Labor Day on Monday, and a lot of our, um, city staff will be recognizing that important thing as well, that holiday. Um, thank you. Well, let alderman move approval of the report of the committee to hold for August 21st, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That report is approved. We have one proclamation this evening, and alderman Ambrose is gonna present that proclamation.
Thank you, honor. I'm honored to read this proclamation. It reads, "Whereas prostate cancer is the number-one cancer among men, and the second known cause of cancer-related deaths among men in the United States, whereas over twenty-two percent of the males diagnosed in Iowa are diagnosed with prostate cancer, there are more than 2.9 million men alive in the United States of America with a history of prostate cancer, which is the most diagnosed cancer in men today, second only to skin cancer. Whereas approximately 180,000 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and over 26,000 lives will be taken due to prostate cancer, whereas early-stage prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and is treatable if detected. As such, early detection is the key to successful treatment and survival. And whereas while the exact causes of prostate cancer remain unknown, medical research has identified well-established risk factors in which men should be familiar, including age, family history, and race. Now therefore, we Frank Klitsch, Mayor of the City of Davenport, do hereby proclaim March/September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to remember the men who have lost their life to this disease and resolve to reach a tomorrow where prostate cancer is no longer a threat to our sons and grandsons. The City of Davenport Skybridge will display the color blue from Tuesday, September 3rd through Monday, September 9th, in recognition of prostate cancer awareness. I move this proclamation."
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. And Mr. Warren Venky will come up and accept the proclamation.
The mayor's, uh, parent.
Oh, okay.
I want to rotate it up and down, the proclamation.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Should I speak to the earlier?
Sure, right ahead.
Uh, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, and the City of Davenport, for designating September as Cancer, uh, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, I know several men who have had prostate cancer, someone died, and, uh, the Prostate Cancer Foundation is one of the leading foundations supporting research in prostate cancer. And, um, as part, I think everyone would like to know that, uh, our Skybridge will be one of eighty-eight, uh, buildings or landmarks across the country that are gonna be light in blue during, um, September. And that's gonna be in all fifty states. And I think that it's really important that we raise the awareness of prostate cancer, and thank the city for agreeing to do this, and I think it's a, it's a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, for making the presentation. Uh, we have two presentations this evening. One, uh, I always enjoy this, we're gonna be swearing in a new police officer, and I'd like, uh, to bring up our, uh, one of our newest officers, Nick Berger, and I think he's coming up with the chief and a...
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, of course, your police chief. And this evening, I have the pleasure, it's one of my favorite things to do, and it's, uh, one, it's the process of hiring new police officers, and tonight is the formal, uh, swearing in of the oath of office. Um, it's an amazing time for us, and US council, to meet maybe for the first time this evening, our, our newest, uh, one of our newest police officers, Nick Berger. Nick grew up in Lockport, Illinois, and graduated from Lockport Township High School in 2014. During high school, he played baseball and hockey. He attended Western Illinois University, where he earned a bachelor's degree, and also earned a 4.0 GPA. Nick participated in a professional law enforcement fraternity at Western, and also worked for a gaslight department. He completed 500-hour internship at the Will County Sheriff's Office, and he now resides in Davenport. Uh, in his spare time, he enjoys cross-dip training and walking his dog. Uh, his girlfriend, Brittany, will be opening the bench.
Thank you. Why don't you come over here, and I will read, you'll stand right here and face me. And, uh, one thing I found out, that Nick, uh, none of his family could be here tonight. Uh, so of course, as a city, we want to adopt Nick and, uh, you know, be part of our, you know. So, would you read your right hand, and follow me, speak after me. I state your name.
Uh, Nick Berger.
Do solemnly square, say.
Do solemnly square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
In the City of Davenport.
In the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Come on up. You get to get in.
Welcome here, taking a seat. Just take a, a short minute to let you know that, uh, we have five additional police officers who started the academy this week, and Nick starts his field training officer program Saturday on night shift with Corporal P. Owen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome again, Nick. Uh, we're, not only are we honored to have you as part of our police department, but, uh, I think you should be excited about the tremendous amount, tremendous staff we have, the wonderful police department, and all the personnel. So, thank you again, and thank you to Chief. Um, our next item is another one of fun things for me, is we're gonna recognize the Southeast Little League Ten and Under State Champions. And I got to coach Little League, and when my youngest son was twelve, we were one game short of going to Williamsport, um, so I know how exciting it must have been for all of you, and the big thing is that you want to play again next year and have fun doing this. That's what's most important. So, we're gonna come out and present it to all of you that are here, and again, we'll have big smiles on the picture. Coming with me is alderman Kyle Gripp. He's alderman-at-large, and he represents the whole city as one of our aldermen, and he's also a baseball coach, and he works and coaches in Southeast Little League as well, so I wanted him to join me and help with these presentations. So, he'll call out your name, and then I'll present to the certificate, where you get a little picture and a handshake, and then if you guys want to stand right here in front of us, on this side, so we can get a new pictures here, and then we'll get one big group picture when we're done. Okay? Does that work? Okay, good.
All right. Thank you, your honor, and I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to be up here to give these, uh, young men their awards. You guys have made Southeast Little League proud, uh, your parents proud, and the City of Davenport proud, in winning a state championship, and not only, uh, winning, uh, but doing it with class and good sportsmanship. We really appreciate the way that you represented, uh, the City of Davenport at the state tournament. And, uh, to, we've got Southeast president, Thomas Mason, here. He built Southeast into one of the premier Little Leagues in the state of Iowa. Thank you for all of your volunteer work. You worked very hard to make that Little League what it is. And then, uh, Coach Dave and Coach Dave, who are here, uh, two more volunteers who, they coach a lot of different teams and different sports, and they are pillars of our community. Thank you for all of your hard work and volunteerism.
So, our first player is Cale Shovlin. Come on up, Cale. She can, here we go, let's present, you come on over here with me. Is he smiling?
He sure is.
Okay, yeah. All right. Second player. Jonas Smith. Also, hold on, Kyle, just a minute before we hold that up. We also have a city sticker that you get on a ballot about being the city council. So, we're gonna each one of you one of those as well, so you can keep that open as well. Thank you all for your time. Come on up, Jonas Smith. Good season, congratulations. Congratulations, come on around, we'll do that. You want to turn it this way, or?
Yeah, I'll be here. Thank you.
Great.
Logan Larson.
Congratulations, Logan. Come on over here. Mitchell Holst. Go ahead, Mitch, Mitch. Here you go, Mitch. Let's turn over this way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tanner Bitterman. Tanner, congratulations. Turn it this way, facing our way. You might have two.
I think he has two.
Huh? He might have two. Oh, trying to get two. Wyatt Frecking. Mason McFate. Congratulations, Mason. Turn this way. Why don't you go on that side? Split us out. Owen Everhart. You go on, congratulations. What positions you play?
Assistant.
Teagan Pringle. You go on that side, too. Logan, is, Logan's not here? Just Colin, the last one? Colin Townsend. Congratulations. Yeah. Here you go. Okay, why don't we have all you guys? Come on, oh yeah, we'll have the coaches first. Let's get some room here. Let's get some room here. Dave squared. I need one more sticker. We got a coach short of a sticker. You guys can still get one sticker. Okay, let's all get all together here. We'll have the coaches in the back row, and you guys all right up here in front of us.
Kyle, do you want to go back to the council committee?
They're getting prez up there, too.
Do you want to go behind the tables of the council and begin it with you?
Come on, Tom. You come on up here. You guys want to be in this way? They told us to go up here this time.
Usually, we put them against the guy, and you guys center.
Let's all go back there. Okay, here we go. Take this exact group, and without changing the picture. No, just go back there.
That's what I can pick, Lee. Now, I'm not skating on my mask. I think my face is probably blocking you.
Thanks, you're good. Appreciate it.
He's back row, fifth, is that way.
That's true, though.
Far back row. You can't see my face back row, I can't see the face. Keep that line, you can't. Right, one, two, three, four. And one, two, three, and then four.
Everybody else set? Congratulations, set. Congratulations. You might be police. It's Thomas. Let's do this. You come see me. Congrats. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the city council, Mayor of Davenport, for your support of Little League, and keeping children in the law parks, and giving us such nice ballparks to play in. We really appreciate it, and the kids appreciate it. We really appreciate it, and we appreciate it as well as the staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any petitions or communications by anyone this evening? Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, thank you, your honor. Just a few things tonight. Um, Bucktown Center for the Arts will celebrate its reopening after the flood during final Friday, due to the opening of the Dick Oberg Photography Exhibit, the Line Rock, Ravel, featuring the Tom Hempel flood painting, and Linda Harden flood plaque, or membership to the figure. That's Friday, August 30th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Bucktown Center for the Arts. Now, there are lots of ways to celebrate the upcoming holiday weekend with music and personal couple. On Friday, you can kick off the weekend with a free Live at Five concert at the RME Courtyard with the band Hangover Rescue Team. The fun begins at 5:00 p.m. And on Sunday, September 1st, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., Praise on the River is a free concert, a family-oriented festival hosted by, um, a dozen local churches. It's in the Claire Park, there's food trucks, kids' games, bounce houses, and live music from local bands. And we will be taking on this week, uh, the Party in the Park. Mark your calendars for next Thursday, September 5th, at Prairie Heights Park. And you can join us first for the dedication of the nearby Miracle Field at 5:00 p.m., and Party in the Park, uh, at 5:30 p.m. That's at Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Boulevard. This will be our last Party in the Park of the 2019 season. And finally, the third ward meeting will be Sunday, September 8th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Antoine Leclerc House, at 6:30 East 7th Street. Hope everybody has a wonderful holiday weekend, and that's all I have tonight, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, and again, I want to thank you, again, the parties in the park have been phenomenal, and, uh, again, thank you enough. I know we talked about it in the beginning, but you actually took it and ran with it, and I want to thank you for that, you and Tiffany, Samantha, and all the staff. So, of course, Cory and the team as well. So, thank you. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, ma'am. A couple things, um, as schools started now, and the kids are back here in Davenport, um, we get, we hear a lot of conversation about the schools, so if you're so inclined and you haven't been in them for a while, I'd encourage you, with all the renovations and construction, and our buildings are beautiful, and the wonderful things that the kids are doing, uh, we hear a lot of talks, so I'd encourage you to come visit, come see, come see all the wonderful things that are going on. And somebody asked me the other day, we say the pledge here at council every day, do they do it in the schools? So, if you come to Central High School, uh, every day, over the intercom, fifteen hundred kids saying the pledge, um, together is a really cool thing. And then, we hear a lot of discussion about, um, our streets and all the efforts that our public works are putting in. I just want to take a moment, if I may, and remind, uh, of just a few little tidbits about what our public works folks do and, and how they, you know, deal with our streets. Just in the last decade, we've spent almost $200 million on street-related projects in our, in our capital budget. Um, to, to, we make an emphasis and a priority by doing that. We at the council here have challenged and, and pushed our staff to do that, and they've accepted it, um, multiple projects over the many years, uh, that are big, like Division and Kimberly and, and Marquette, uh, and, and many others, and, and everybody up here could, could tout and talk about all the projects that go on. Um, this council specifically has put, uh, more money into streets than ever before, millions of dollars of increases. We've challenged our finance folks, our city administrator, our public works to do that, and they've accepted it and done that, uh, every year. We increased funding, uh, and we now make this council, uh, making neighborhood streets as much as a priority as our big streets. And they, we haven't done that, uh, for a long time, and now this council said we need to do that. Um, we talk about complete reconstruction, we talk about resurfacing asphalt and concrete, micro-surfacing, full-dip patching. We have a line item and millions of dollars going to every one of those things, and just, I know the favorite subject of potholes, uh, this city filled more potholes in the last six months than it did all last year. So, when we hear people talking about we're not doing stuff, of course we need to do better. Of course we need to increase what we're doing, and of course we need to continue to work. But to say that the challenge by this council and other folks over the last many years hasn't been accepted, and our staff hasn't done that, I just wanted to take that moment to say that we are. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Uh, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, honor. First off, great points, Mike. Uh, yeah, we're a city 180 years old, we have some challenges, but we have great leadership, great staff. You know, Tommy Mason, the president of Southeast Little League, congratulated our baseball diamonds because they look so great, and really, we have great parks and they all look fantastic, and I want to congratulate our parks director and his staff. And I think the most incredible observation I've made this last week is how our riverfront grass has come back. To be down there, and I would encourage everybody to go down and take a look. You know, the riverfront looks like it hasn't, there hasn't been a flood, and they've done an incredible job at, uh, Lowbuck, and, you know, the riverfront looks great, and for the new events coming up down there, they should be extremely happy, so, thanks for a good job, Jed, your staff.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Condon.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know what you guys are doing later tonight after this, but if you want to go look at that grass, um, I'm gonna go and see the, uh, the Central High School marching band perform at the Leclerc Park Band Shell. Yeah, it's been a great summer concerts that we've had on Sunday nights in spite of the flood. Uh, me and my family have really enjoyed it, and tonight we get to see our favorite, uh, the Central High School marching band. My three-year-old tells me there's gonna be ice cream. And then last Thursday, I had an opportunity to do a ride-along, uh, with Sergeant Harris. Uh, I want to thank Sergeant Harris and thank the chief for setting that up. Um, I think I could probably do a hundred ride-alongs and come up with a hundred different takeaways, uh, depending on the evening, but, um, the takeaway that I had after this particular evening was the professionalism that the Nets, uh, officers have within our community, uh, the great job that they do reaching out to the individuals that they see, uh, on the streets and sidewalks, and also, um, how much they rely on their partnerships with our nonprofits and, and what a service they do for us. So, it's honestly something I wish I would have done a lot sooner. Uh, I'm glad I did it, and, uh, look forward to doing, doing another one sometime in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. And I just want to add, you know, we have, I've gotten the opportunity to meet and get to know, as, as friends as well, many of our police officers. Uh, but I want to give a shout-out to Sergeant Harris as well. I get the opportunity to go to a lot of community events, literally from one end of our community to the other, and I see Andrew there at many, many, many of those, and people run up to him, exactly what it's all about, to say hi, engage him, the kids, adults, and families, so thank you for all your efforts. Uh, we can't thank you enough for all your work, as well as the chief and all of our officers as well. Um, with that, I think we're gonna move on. Is there any, uh, other ordinances or resolutions or motions this evening? Uh, none? Is there any public with business? Oh, I'm sorry. We're doing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's been a motion, a second. Thank you all for allowing me. I knew that was rapid response, so, uh, could you call the roll, please?
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Digman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Luhl?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor.
Thank you. But that has been approved. Now, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening?
Still none.
Still none, thank you. Uh, do we have any public with business, uh, this evening? If there are, I ask that, again, uh, we have five minutes, and, uh, go from there. I did a name and so forth.
Mayor, council members, Bill Handel. I live in Nashville, but I'm here almost as much as I'm there, so, uh, I guess I'm a part-time resident, at least. And, um, my topic tonight is, uh, it's an email that I sent earlier today, addressed to Councilman Gripp, and it's, uh, the first sentence, it applies everywhere, and this is regarding, um, what I think is something that wasn't done before the Figgy and Downtown Davenport Partnership started their design work, and it should have been done, we might have had a more different result, um, and I think it still should be done. And, uh, so I'll, I'll start it. Councilman Gripp, a few years back, I attended a city council meeting in which you invoked the memory and spirit of William Peterson, who in the early 20th century, came back from Europe with the dream to bring a bit of the continent back to, uh, the Davenport riverfront, along with architect Rudolph Plausen, uh, the son of the, the architect who did the Redstone Building. He shepherded construction of the Peterson Pavilion.
But to say that the challenge by this council and other folks over the last many years hasn't been accepted and our staff hasn't done that, I just wanted to take that moment to say that we are. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you Alderman Mattson. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, great points Mike. We're a city 180 years old. We have some challenges, but we have great leadership, great staff. Tommy Mason, the president of Southeast Little League congratulated our baseball diamonds because they look so great. And really, we have great parks and they all look fantastic. And I want to congratulate our parks director and his staff. And I think the most incredible observation I've made this last week is how our riverfront grass has come back. To be down there, and I would encourage everybody to go down and take a look. You know, the riverfront looks like it hasn't, there hasn't been a flood. And they've done an incredible job at a low bucket. The riverfront looks great. And for the new events coming up down there, they should be extremely happy. So thanks for a good job Jed, your staff.
Thank you Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Condon.
Thank you. I don't know what you guys are doing later tonight after this, but if you want to go look at that grass. I'm going to go and see the Central High School marching band perform at the Leclerc Park Band Shell. It's been a great summer concerts that we've had on Sunday nights in spite of the flood. Me and my family really enjoyed it. And tonight we get to see our favorite, the Central High School marching band. My three-year-old tells me there's going to be ice cream. And then last Thursday, I had an opportunity to do a ride along with Sergeant Harris. I want to thank Sergeant Harris and thank the chief for setting that up. I think I could probably do 100 ride alongs and come up with 100 different takeaways depending on the evening. But the takeaway that I had after this was the professionalism that the Nets officers have within our community. The great job that they do reaching out to the individuals that they see on the streets and sidewalks. And also how much they rely on their partnerships with our nonprofits and what a service they do for us. So it's honestly something I wish I would have done a lot sooner. I'm glad I did it and look forward to doing, doing another one sometime in the future. Thanks.
Thank you Alderman Condon. And I just want to add, you know, we have, I've gotten the opportunity to meet and get to know as, as friends as well, many of our police officers. But I want to give a shout out to Sergeant Harris as well. I get the opportunity to go to a lot of community events, literally from one end of our community to the other. And I see Andrew there at many, many, many of those. And people run up to him, exactly what it's all about, to say hi, engage him, the kids, adults, and families. So thank you for all your efforts. We can't thank you enough for all your work. As well as the chief and all of our officers as well. With that, I think we're going to move on. Are there any other ordinances or resolutions or motions this evening? None? Is there any public with business?
There was a consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're doing this, there are motions to approve the consent agenda. There's been a motion. Thank you all for remaining. I knew that was rapid response. So would you call the roll please?
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
And Dunn.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. But that has been approved. Now, are there any other ordinance, resolutions, or motions this evening?
Still none.
Still none, thank you. Do we have any public with business this evening? If there are, I asked again, we have five minutes and go from there.
Mayor, council members, Bill Handel. I live in Nashville, but I'm here almost as much as I'm there. So I guess I'm a part-time resident at least. And my topic tonight is, it's an email that I sent earlier today addressed to Councilman Gripp. But it's the first sentence. And this is regarding what I think is something that wasn't done before the FIGI and downtown Davenport partnership started their design work. It shouldn't have been done. We might have had a more different result. And I think it still should be done. And so I'll start it. Councilman Gripp, a few years back, I attended a city council meeting in which you invoked the memory and spirit of William Peterson, who in the early 20th century came back from Europe with the dream to bring a bit of the continent back to the Davenport riverfront. Along with architect Rudolph Clausen, the son of the architect who did the Redstone Building. He shepherded construction of the Peterson Pavilion, which we still love. The, hard to say, this beautiful public toilet building next to the Levee Inn. Actually, the Levee Inn itself, which over the years has been used as a measuring stick for our city's Mississippi River floods. These buildings, as I found from Councilman McGinnis, are all currently listed on the National Trust as historic places, as well as they should be because they're historic and they're integral parts of our, of our city over the years. But today, I think I would stress to find there are two items that are not listed that I think should be. And that is, in light of their threatened destruction and/or defacement by RDG's riverfront proposal, which was funded by the FIGI and the downtown Davenport partnership. I'm requesting the city of Davenport make two new increases to the National Trust listings for two structures, namely William Peterson's historic limestone seawalls in two segments as follows. Segment one, the historic limestone seawalls starting at the Mississippi River Roller Dam, continuing downstream to the easternmost edge of the 1950s concrete seawall, which is currently approximately the east side of Perrin Street right away. And that was pretty much at the front of the old dock. This stretch of seawall, limestone seawall is pretty much intact except for the concrete half circle, as you may have noticed where the fish are, which Bill Ashton's firm designed some years ago to alleviate localized problem of tassement. I don't believe that any of the steel guardrails on top of that limestone seawall are original. So I think they could be excluded from historic designation. So the segment two that I would also like to have added is the historic limestone seawall and its attendant steel or limestone guardrails starting at Levee Inn, continuing downstream to Gaines Street. Or, or the west end of Modern Woodman Park where the limestone guardrail ends and becomes a, a metal guardrail. This stretch of seawall is intact from the day it was built, except for the, oh, I'm sorry. It's intact except for the, hmm, it's intact, what can I say? And that includes the 1918 steel guardrail and the straight limestone seawall and the circa 1931 limestone guardrail and the curved limestone seawall that was built when our seawall was extended out to the river so there'd be enough room to construct our Modern Woodman ballpark. I believe that the designation of these elements is violent to our riverfront. And that the vast majority of the citizens of the city would agree. And for them to see that the RDG plan creates a giant 60-foot wide swath bisecting Leclerc Park, irregardless of its impact on that seawall and that walking path, I think it's something people aren't going to watch. And they don't know, I don't think, oh, anyway. It's regrettable that RDG's design couldn't have been completed after the designation of the seawall as a historic element to our city. But then again, this year's record flooding, it seems to me, has changed everything. And I think overall, looking back over the years, I think that the RDG plan would be considered an important stepping stone to what we end up with.
Thank you very much.
But ultimately, I think it's going to be rejected for the most part. Thanks for your answer.
Again, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else with any public comments this evening? Seeing none, are there any other reports of city officials? Then I have just one issue. Will an Alderman move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of a particular real estate pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, subset 1, subset J?
Subuted.
Subuted.
It's subuted and seconded to go into adjourned to executive session. Roll call to you.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
And Ambrose. Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The council is adjourned to executive session. I just want to note that the council will not be returning to council chambers after the executive session. So thank you all for being here this evening. This meeting, this portion of the meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night. Yes, Nashville.
May it be historic.
Thank you.
That's not harassing. Is it based on age, gender, or any other protected class?
I mean, RDG calls it.
Okay. Moving on then.
So did you, you hired six and this one already had law enforcement background?
Um, well, we hired one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it's about 40 in Iowa where the bridge goes. See a truck going, it's about 31. You've got to tell me that's a good area.
Well, don't they go into there that hour?
No, no, they take river dry. But when river dry's closed.
Oh.
You know, I, I don't know what they.
What about the two, the two-way verse? I thought, oh, I meant the two-way verse.
Don't we have better things to spend $7 million on?
Well, I, I can't believe it costs that. What they're planning on doing is having, you know, all landscaping.
At one time they were talking about a roundabout at 40. They're talking about all that BS and it's like, no.
Yeah, right.
Why? What, what, what do you, what do you?
I mean.
What do you accomplish by doing it? Absolutely nothing.
You know, who's, who's ever thought that they consider, they consider doing the least costly thing? I mean, just like yesterday, I was at the riverfront improvement meeting, you know, talking about the, the freight house. They're going to replace all that wood decking, you know, and, and all the guardrail. And I was looking, I said, really that wood decking, it's been there a long time, but it's not awful. They could get another five years out of it. And, I don't know. And the guardrail, you know, I think, oh, anyway, I've got some ideas on that. There's been, there's been anything they need to spread.
I was kind of hoping people from the CRC were going to come and play.
Who's the CRC?
Because I had a whole.
Who's, who's the CRC?
The Civil Rights Commission.
Oh, okay.
I, I had a whole rebuttal that I was going to.
You missed your chance. It was last week.
Well, I was here last week, but I didn't have anything prepared. And I thought it was kind of, kind of coincidence that all the media was here when, when they did that. And now tonight, none of the media's here and they're not doing it, so I.
Well, you know that there are phone calls made.
Oh, sure.
That it's a big thing.
Yeah, but nobody called me.
I have my own feelings on it. You were going to say something about Sheila.
Well, no, I was going to say that if, that if she decides to run, if she had filed papers and you needed any financial assistance, to call me.
Oh.
And I would, I would gladly donate to your campaign.
Thank you. And you can do that through my Facebook page.
I don't, I'm not on Facebook.
Oh, as far as I know. You and Bruce Schirler, Bruce is my driver when I put signs out. As far as I know, she is not. But even if she did, she doesn't live in the ward.
Well, but she didn't live in the fifth ward last time she ran. She lived, she lived in the eighth ward.
And I don't believe in dirty campaigns, but if she ran, I would have to call that out.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I would, I mean, I can, I don't know the address off the top of my head, but I can drive you there where she lives. But that's, that's regardless of what.
It, it's well-known.
I, I wish that the, I didn't think that you hadn't had your papers in by now, but maybe you.
Yeah, by Monday was the deadline. You could first turn them in on the 13th. But the final day was Monday because I looked up the website on Tuesday because I was aware of two people I had not seen there yet. But yeah, there are six of us.
So I would assume that Rita is going to write you a letter of recommendation of some type?
I can ask her for that because I'm.
I would.
I'm going to be with her several times.
What do you give her a writing for?
Fifth ward.
Fifth ward of the woman.
Okay. And what part of town is that?
Well, it is basically.
Middle east.
Yeah.
Well, it's, west of Jersey Ridge, east of Brady, roughly.
Roughly.
And then from the river to.
About Duck Creek.
Oh, really? That far off? Okay, okay.
It's quite a large ward.
It's a big area.
I was surprised when I looked at it, at how big it is. So I've been putting a lot of miles on these old.
That's Rita Ross's dispendables?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Has she endorsed you?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Yes.
I, I think a lot of her.
Well, you know what? I didn't know her until I moved back into the house I grew up in. And I was distressed over things in the neighborhood and wasn't getting a lot of action. So I emailed her and told her I was to the point, I was going to throw in the towel, sell the house that had been in my family for over 50 years and move. And asked her to give me a call to set up a time to walk my block with me.
Yeah.
Well, two days later, ding dong, ding dong, I opened the door and there's Rita.
Right, wow, that's great.
She didn't waste a dime. That earned her every single vote for anything she ever wants for.
And I got to say, it was like a couple of months ago, I was speaking for a council. And then after I was done, she called me up and she, and she's taking notes on everything. And I think that's, that's what I like, really like. She had a couple of questions and she wrote down my answers. And I say, I like, I like, I'm impressed with that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, she's very attentive and she studies.
She's a fact person. I want to know the facts. I want to know the numbers. I want to know the details.
Especially the numbers.
Oh, God.
Oh, my God.
She's a numbers person.
She is the only one I know who has read the entire city budget and made notes. And the things like this.
I've read most of it.
Well, you know what that tells me? We all need to get alive, but this is the one I've chosen. Okay, well, as far as I know.
Deep before the.
Yeah, they all left.
Yeah. As far as I know, Sheila is not running. But yes, I would have.
So I wonder if it's on the auditor's website who all is running?
Yes, it is.
Oh, well, then I better look it up.
And I notice.
This is where RDG came up with their, their pattern on the, on the sidewalk, on the park. It's going to look just like this.
And I notice none of my opponents.
Oh, yeah.